Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session Agenda. Item number one, Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Item number two is called the Audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue Review Session and Committee of the whole items on this Work-Study Session Agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, are there any cards this evening on either of these items?
I have not received any. Thank you.
Sounds good. Is there anyone in the audience here today wishing to address the council on any of these items, 3A or 3B? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and I will move on to item 3A, Results for the Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe, otherwise known as the Start Tool. Hello, Wydel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wydel Holmes, Director of the Strategic Management and Innovation Office. And tonight, I'm just very excited to share with you your results from the Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe. First, I'd like to thank you, though, this was our first year and that we did not have any extensions needed for Mayor and Council to complete the exercise and distribute their points. And that was mostly appreciated by staff, including the team from my office. I would be remiss in not thanking Mary Maisy, our Strategic Initiatives Manager, Adam Samuels, our Strategic Management Analyst, Kimberly Sotelo, our Management Assistant -- it does take a team -- and our newest member of our team, Helene Tac, who will be managing our Grants Program citywide, as well as specific focus on sustainability and resilience. So, we much appreciate your attention to the exercise in the tool during these busy months. So, to remind the community that the City Council has established five strategic priority areas, and these are what make a healthy and productive community. And so, we align 105 performance measures around these priorities, and that's how we operationalize this vision with the actual work and strategies and operations that we perform as a city. So, today's presentation is for Mayor and Council to provide direction in regards to the performance measures that they would like us to hyper-focus on as we begin the budget process for fiscal year 24-25. And with that, I'd like to just share a couple key dates. Next week, we'll be sharing your direction with our city team as we kick off our operating budget. And then, in March, we'll come back to Council, and we'll review some of the acceleration models that our office and departments have collaborated to present to you, as well as -- we'll do all of this prior to tentative and final adoption of the budget in May and June, respectively. So, as it relates to the budget process, our office works with departments and their strategy partners to develop strategic plans to help us achieve these goals and these targets. Working with Mayor and Council, I'd like to just share that achieving these is centered on narrowing the focus. We also know that performance and achieving results, you can't buy your way there necessarily. And so, our office is focused on collaborating and shifting resources through strategies that are developed. Sometimes, they're new strategies. Sometimes, they're strategies that are going to work. Sometimes, they're strategies that may not get the success that we were anticipating. So, this is part of really the living and breathing work in regards to strategic management. So, with that, again, just reminder, we'll work with the teams and not focus so much on resource needs, but shifting resources, collaboration, and partnering with organizations, you know, across the city, as well as our community partners. So, the Start Tool results, there were five performance measures that rose to the top of your exercise. And just as a reminder for the community, this is not an allocation of funding. This is really just an exercise to begin the conversations early in the budget process to provide direction for staff. So, these five performance measures, through your point distribution, created five measures that received at least four of your council members, your colleagues', points. They also resulted in having the highest totals, averages, and the median scores. I mentioned the four points from at least four council members. The reason for that is that that shows you where you already have some collective inertia when you try to narrow your focus as we move into the budget process and the strategic planning processes alongside that. So, one of the very first measures that you identified was our Payment Quality Index. And really, this measure, we've had a lot of discussion in historical meetings around this. There's been a lot of work done in moving this measure forward. The one thing that I'd like to just point out is there is a conversation and presentation, including tonight, with Tom Dunsing, our Chief Deputy City Manager, regarding funding to achieve 82 by 2029. At the current rate, we would not achieve this target of performance until 2036. But if we have discussion and planning around funding for GO bonds, we believe that we can get to actually an 82 by 2029. The second performance measure is in regards to ending homelessness, and I'm very pleased to report that we have some celebration in regards to our summer point in time count resulted in a 31-point drop from 2022's count. And that's important because it shows that our strategies are working, although we recognize Tempe needs to still do more, and that's, I know, a commitment that the council and the staff have made. And so, we -- this did rise to the second spot, if you will, in your Start Tool results. Another point of highlight is that our unduplicated Tempeans served through our Navigation and Case Management System went down by 32 points from 2022. This shows that perhaps the population that we're serving in our HMIS system isn't continuing to expand like we've seen since 2018. The other element in regards to ending homelessness is we have had some success in diverting people from homeless services, which means that we're able to find them other solutions, either friends, family, so that they do have opportunities for housing. And we're seeing that on a greater scale than we have in 2022. One of the challenges, though, is still serving the unduplicated, so we still have new members of our community coming into our homelessness system, which means the challenge and the opportunities also still exist for Tempe. Next, I'd like to just share with you in regards to the number of average days from program entry to permanent supportive of housing. There are two elements that the team works with here, and that is the availability of housing and shelter, as well as the acuity of our clients. And so, what this is telling us is that the acuity of our clients, such as healthcare, the ability to get required documents needed for shelter and for housing, is more -- is one of the key challenges to moving this number to our target of 36. So, it's almost tripled, if you will. The other thing is, we have had less success in permanent housing, and again, that's an associated challenge in regards to shelter, to permanent supportive housing, and then long-term housing. The third performance measure that came to your top-five results of your Start Tool was our Property Code Enforcement. And this measure had, for about three years, moved out of our important satisfaction matrix with our community, which means we were moving progress. It is now back on the radar, but I am very pleased to share that one strategic change has taken place, and that is part of our city manager's plan. And she has implemented a collective approach to code enforcement by having not only our commercial and residential property code enforcement services be combined with our alley code enforcement services. So, that's a strategic move in regards to moving property code enforcement forward. The team, though, still also focuses on commercially -- commercial property enforcement because that is where we saw also less satisfaction in our community survey. Feeling of Safety in Your Neighborhood. We know that the feeling of safety is important in regards to people's psychological feeling here in the city. And while a crime or an incident may not be taking place in your neighborhood, that overall feeling is important to us as residents and as families and as individuals. And so, with this particular measure, we have been focusing on our Community Responder Program, our Park Ranger Program, as well as, and most importantly here, some innovation in regards to how we create an alley quality index. And with that, we will be coming back to Council to share the contributing variables on how we're going to measure our progress and as it supports the feeling of safety in neighborhoods. And then, finally, employee turnover. Tempe is not immune to what is going on nationally across the board in regards to workforce. And so, working with Human Resources and our six-sided partnership, one of the key elements here is the request at some point in the near future that other staff will talk with you about, is requesting compensation reviews, but most importantly, looking at our ability to fund a compensation and classification study. And so, that would be a discussion in regards to the use of contingency fundings at a future date. And with that, I'll just remind you what the top-five of your collective inertia was in regards to the Start Tool, and formally ask for direction for staff as we begin the budget process where we want to hyper-focus.
Sounds good. Thank you, Wydel. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wydel, for the presentation. I think the top-five are probably what we all would've guessed would trickle up to the top. For me, it's hard to say we should focus on one or the other, frankly, but obviously, we want to, particularly for me, you know, the PQI and ending homelessness is very important. So, I guess my question to you is, what limit do we have here? I assume we can't say, "Let's just focus on all five and throw some, you know, more power behind them." Is it two? Is it three? Is it one counts for two?
So, I always look at progress over perfection. And so, Councilmember Keating, great question. What I do recommend is, unlike last year, where we had 15 performance measures accelerated, we did share with you back in November that we altered the tool a bit to almost force a constriction for you. And the reason for that is, the more you narrow your focus, the more probability that you can achieve with excellence. And you've heard that from many entrepreneurs to, you know, thought leaders around the world. And so, I don't think there's one perfect number, but I would say my practice has usually been between three and five things to focus on, you can actually do with excellence, even better if it's less than three.
Yeah. See, I was thinking about last year as well, and I was trying --
Exactly.
I noticed how now we have our five. Which one of these do you like? So, for what it's worth, you know, my emphasis would be on one and two. I think PQI and ending homelessness are the two most important that we hear from our residents on a regular basis, particularly as I'm out there campaigning. Everyone is upset about the streets. So, that would be my two. If I think, if we go a majority of the five you suggested, then maybe we're diluting our effort a little too much. So, I'm gonna say one and two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you. First of all, great presentation. I love how simple it is. I mean, it makes it really easily to understand, you know, and we just, like, put the charts out there, so people can really grasp it. So, good job on that.
Thank you.
I'm really happy about the movement towards improving our Payment Quality Index. I'm with Councilmember Keating as far as, you know, when we're out there and knocking on doors or talking to people, people are very upset about their payments and the quality of it. And they're also upset about the residential payments. And so, I want to see us do everything possible to improve our payment index and also to improve our safety on our streets. And with that, a lot of the Payment Quality Index can be improved by having other things implemented in our streets, traffic calming and things like that, so we can do two at the price of one.
Right. Thank you, Member -- Councilmember Adams. The intersection among strategies is not lost on the team. It does start to look a little bit like a spider web, if you will, because we know that one thing always affects another thing, and so, we're always trying to balance that. But most importantly, we're trying to leverage where those strategies help us achieve more than just the one intended outcome. We know there's other benefits to looking at that way. And to your point in regards to our community satisfaction, we are below the national average of 53% satisfaction. In our last community survey, we were at 51%. And that is for neighborhood streets, but for our major streets and sidewalks, we're actually 11 points higher than the national average. And so, I think that that supports our strategy from last year in regards to focusing on residential streets. And I know that our Municipal Utilities Team always looks at that intersection of opportunity. Where is our satisfaction? Where is our equity in regards to planning those projects? And then, ultimately, streets were in the top-six that were important, items important to businesses in our business survey, and then also in the top-three of what they thought the city should focus on as a priority over the next year.
Great. Thank you. And so, I'm really happy about the communication that's going on with the residents. And like I said, the most complaints I get now are the residents' neighborhoods, and they're just like -- and the thing that people, a lot of times, don't understand is that affects property values. So, that curb appeal is a very real thing. So, when you drive by a house, you say you're looking for a house, and the streets are really nice, that's gonna really make a difference on your property value. So, I just wanna throw that in for tidbits. Also, the fact that we dropped 31% in our unsheltered is absolutely unheard of. I would argue that there's fewer than 10 communities in this country that can say that their homeless population or the unsheltered population was lower. So, we're doing a great job. And I think that, you know, with the HOPE and with the CARE-7 and, you know, all of the coordination that we're doing is really making a huge difference. I think the Park Rangers, it's gonna be a huge increase in the feeling of safety in your neighborhoods and your neighborhood parks. I was happy to be able to kick that off last Saturday with Councilmember Hodge, and really, really excited about those Park Rangers and changing the look of our city. And I just want to thank you for the presentation, and I, too, with Councilmember Keating, I'm -- one and two are the highest priorities for me. And let's just keep up the good work because we're doing a great job. And also, hats off to our city manager, Rosa Nchowsi, for really making these things come to fruition at a fast pace, which I love. So, thank you. Thank you, City Manager Nchowsi.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Will we go to Councilmember Hodge and Councilmember Navarro?
All right. Thank you, guys. Sorry. Sorry, my voice is going in and out. I do apologize for not being here today. I just got out the hospital, but I am on the meeting. I want to say I agree with my colleagues on one and two. I just feel that number two is probably the most important part for me, is because if we have one person that's homeless, it's one too many. So, I just want to continue to make that one of our number-one priorities in our city because it's great. We have great-looking houses. We have great-looking roads. But if we have people that's still living on the streets or in parks or in -- on bus stops, then I don't feel that that's where our city needs to be. I think that -- I know it's a regional thing. I know it's something national, but I want us to continue to fight the fight every day when it comes to our homeless and our homeless in our city. So, and thanks, it was a wonderful presentation, but mine would definitely be -- top priorities would be two, then one, but the top two would be those two. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. I mean, looking at the list of all five of them, it's not like we're gonna stop doing three of them, you know, if we pick our top two, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And it seems like we have things already going in the system, and it'd be like, let's say, with homelessness, I'm just gonna use that. We are gonna still build on those programs, no matter what. We're still have people that are in charge, that we have resources, we have all these partnerships and everything like that. So, I guess with that said, I'm kinda not -- same with employee turnover. I mean, huge. I mean, that's a crisis, but we're still going to do it. We're not saying that's not our priority if I pick two. So, I guess for me, knowing that all five of these are gonna be continuing on, all five of these are gonna have the ability to get better and better, better, I'm just saying, the visual stuff is what our residents see all the time. So, they talk about pavement, they talk about properties and code enforcement, and I'm gonna add something with code enforcement, it also includes Tempe properties, too.
Absolutely.
So, that has to be coupled with that. So, I'm gonna say one and three, and it's not to say the others aren't quality, I just know that those programs, even on a county level, on a state level, are, especially with homelessness, are getting attention, and we're continuing that. I'm just saying, I think, when we see things and we hear about the stuff that we might have, like, some impact, like, quicker, I'm gonna go with one and three.
Okay. If I could also just share that, to your point, Councilmember Navarro, while we have 105 performance measures, those strategies still stay in place. The differentiating factor here is, what do we really put even a higher level of focus? That means our energies, our time, our purposeful and intentional collaboration together. We get to, quote, use the word, accelerate by doing that. So, we will still continue to provide quality services to our residents and our businesses and our visitors, but by having this distinction, we manage it and execute a little bit differently. It's kind of like, this is what I consider playing in the championship. You play at your highest level. And so, that's what I relate these performance measures to, once council has provided direction on which ones they would like to accelerate.
No, thank you on that. I appreciate that. And I'm just looking at, and I guess I'm probably inundated on property and code enforcement because I'm in an area that's just, you know, I'm seeing it every single day, and I'm hearing it every single day. It's like the number-one topic in the neighborhood I'm at. I know other neighborhoods might not have it as much, but it's blatant, and it's one of those things, I think that with some attention, we probably can have some results. So, not discounting anything else.
Sounds good. Thank you. You actually made a point, Councilmember Navarro, that I wanted to kind of touch upon as well, which is, so, one of the items that, and this is not to reorder anything in this list, because I always want to make sure that we're not touching the list as it currently is. One of my big things was actually item number seven, and I agree that all of these things are top-five in my book, but number seven, which was the Housing Index. And when I look at some of these things, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because item one is sort of really a, it's kind of partially a CIP item, but it's also somewhat general fund. You have to have the money to complete the projects, but then also the labor force to do them all. But sort of items, almost like two, three, four, and five are much more, from my perspective, they're kind of general fund items. They're much more related to sort of staff and ongoing revenues. So, this is really more, it might be a better conversation for item 3B tonight. We start talking about the bond program and some of our capital needs, but I would love to kind of talk about item number seven, maybe during the bond program, so that's gonna be much more of sort of a CIP need. But once again, not asking to reorder anything right here, just wanted to see if we could have some further conversation, maybe later on tonight regarding the bonds, but I wanted to mention that that was item number seven on this list, to make sure that I was staying within the open-meeting law, so.
Thank you, Mayor. If it would be of assistance, the numbers one, two, three, four, and five are just the order they fell in the Start Tool. But if you look in your packets, and this is mainly to share for our community, these scores were not that far off, and in fact, Payment Quality Index had an average of 8.57, while all the other ones had 5.71 that are in the list of here, two, three, four, and five. So, they are all very close. And so, I would encourage Mayor and Council to think of this as an "and" versus an "or", but knowing that only so much can fit into that "and."
Exactly. No, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Because, yeah, one of my thoughts was, you know, wanting to make sure, you know, I hear a lot about, definitely, payment quality, as Councilmember Keating and Vice Mayor Adams talked about. I hear about it constantly when I'm out knocking on doors and going to neighborhood meetings. But I also hear a lot about housing needs as well. We all hear about the concern about the lack of affordable and workforce housing and the desperate need to get more as quickly as possible. So, that's why I just wanted to make sure to bring that up, but wanted to make sure I was saying for the record, too, not asking to reorder anything on this list, because as we talk about, if we add too many things or start trying to reorder things, at some point, you're focusing on too many things, and you're not doing anything particularly well. So, just wanted to make the point. Anyone else? Councilmember Gerald?
You're so funny. You know, looking at your list, and I did go through and looked at the whole entire list that we had and saw that Payment Quality was one number and the other ones were all the same.
Exactly.
It's your, to me, when I look at this and you want me to pick, you know, one or two of these or three of these, so we kind of go through them, it's like asking which one of my four kids I like the best.
Exactly.
So, well, thank you. No, they're all my favorites, all four of them. They're equal. But when I look at this, I was gonna ask a question regarding the employee turnover. Specifically, that employee turnover, is that employees leaving and why, or is that employee retention and recruiting employment more? I mean, because we've got a lot of positions open, so that seems like that would be really important.
That employee turnover is the percentage of employees choosing to leave the city. And, but what effect that that has, in addition to additional FTEs that were added in past budget years, is it does create a broader and a larger vacancy. And so, we are working with HR and tracking our vacancy rate as well. They go hand in hand. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, because I was looking at that as, say, that if we had, if we were hire, if we had all of our hires in, hired FTS in, and our, all of our departments were full, I think we can offer better customer service. We can get more things done in the city of Tempe. That's why I think that that one's actually, like, sitting there is a really nice spot because it is something that is important. If we can work on getting our employees, keeping our employees, and getting, bringing in people and filling those positions, we could offer more to the city, to our residents. And I think, so, that's why I think that that one's really important. I'm glad to see it in the top-five. If I were have to, if I would have to look on here and say what my, I would just say my top-three, I would say Payment Quality is definitely the best. I did twist my ankle when I was out walking in a neighborhood the other day on a crack that was about this wide. Not really, but it was a pretty big crack. But, so, I would say number one is definitely Payment Quality Index for me. Ending homelessness, we're never gonna end homelessness, but we can certainly do better. We can always do more. So, I think that's my number-two. And I would say number three would, for me, would be employee turnover, if that is looking at how we are going to retain and add more employees to do better service for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I respond, Mayor?
Oh, yes, please.
So, to your point about picking your favorite child, again, this is an opportunity which I think we've just really switched gears from past years. You can have a collection of performance measures. I would remind, just kind of a best practice would be three to five for us to hyper-focus on, if that can make you more comfortable with not having to pick a favorite child. You're welcome.
That's it. Councilwoman Sheen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the information. It's always interesting. I can't pick two out of these five for you. I think all five are interrelated. If you don't have, if you don't take care of employee turnover, you have nobody to take care of the other four.
That's right.
Right? And what it, what this conveys to me is that, as these all rose to the top, it makes sense. We all notice the payment quality issues right now, and we're hearing about it, and we all experience it as well. We care about those that are unsheltered. We are a caring community, and we want our residents, I want to feel safe in my neighborhoods, and I want it to look nice, and I want people to follow the rules when it comes to caring for property. So, all five work. I think narrowing it down to five from 15 is much easier, but they're all related for me. So...
I couldn't agree more. I think progress is from 15 to five for this next fiscal year. So, again, like I said, I feel like I'm surprised I'm reversing order a little bit here. I thought asking for a narrow, this narrow of a focus would be challenging, but I hear you pushing yourselves for one to two, but I would just give yourself some grace, and it can be a grouping, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I just want to know that I really support the employees. I think it's been a long time since we've looked at all the numbers and everything, and that's been very reflective of the survey that came out, as far as how far behind we are on employee numbers. And I know that the city manager is working on rectifying that, and that's gonna make a big difference for keeping our employees, because right now, people are stealing our employees because they're able to make so much more money. And with this, with inflation and the cost of living in our valley, you know, it makes a difference. The extra $10,000 or whatever makes a difference. So, I think by really looking and evaluating these numbers and keeping us on a fast track to get our salaries where we need them to be for employees is super-important, and it certainly is a priority for me. So, I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
May I respond, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, I would like to highlight, because employee turnover was also an acceleration model for this particular fiscal year that we're in right now. One of the strategies that the Human Resources Department explored and is implementing is the ability to basically utilize your ASRS service. When you move from another organization and come to Tempe, you may have that calculation for your vacation accrual. And so, that is an innovation in regards to looking at, how do we retain, attract employees? So, I just want to congratulate the department on that because that was as a result of focusing on employee turnover as a acceleration model.
Thanks for bringing that up. That was very innovative, easy for me to say. So, thanks, Rebecca, wherever you are out there. Oh, there you are. Hi, Rebecca. So, thanks for doing that.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Anyone else need further comments or questions? All right, looks like none. Widel, thank you so much. Great presentation.
To clarify, are we keeping all five, Mayor?
Yeah, it looks like, yeah. Since you were, since you were saying, give us some grace and some latitude, we didn't have to make those tight decisions.
Give ourselves that grace, all right.
Keep them all, so.
Well, thank you again, and on behalf of our departments and our team, we really appreciate again your attention to the tool and being able to give us this early direction. Appreciate that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And thank you to the council for all of us getting our recommendations in on time this year, you know, a little pat on the back for everyone.
I want to know who was late in 2020, Mayor, because I had to do mine from a jungle in Costa Rica. I want to know who was late.
Look, Councilmember, look, Councilmember Keating, we can't, we can't look backwards on it, we've got to look forward, so.
I'll find out.
Exactly. Let me next go to item 3B, general obligation bond authorization procedures. See Tom and Lisette coming forward. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much. To my right is Ms. Lisette Camacho, Financial Services Director. And we're here to talk about the general obligation bond procedures. This is a very regulated process, a very systematic process. And to keep us in line, we also have a few people in our audience, in case it gets very technical. We have from RBC Capital Markets, Mr. Kurt Freund, who's been involved in city financing, actually longer than I've been here, so over 30 years. And Tom Carlson with RBC Capital Markets. And our bond attorney, Mr. Paul Gales, with Greenberg Trial Rig is also in the audience. Again, if it gets very technical, we'll definitely yield the, or we'd like to yield the floor to them to answer your questions. So tonight, it's really informational only. There is a chance for feedback and, and Mayor, I heard you talk about affordable housing. We will be talking about slides for pavement quality index. But certainly, we'd be able to, be able to answer questions or get your feedback on affordable housing as well, that would fit within geo-bond funding. So as you know, our CIP, one of the biggest funding sources we have is geo-bonds. We go out to the market, we issue bonds. The proceeds in turn, we use to fund our capital projects, our geo-bond funded capital projects. Those geo-bonds are repaid with secondary property taxes, and we'll get in a little bit of that in a few slides. And typically, we have a bond election every four years. Bond elections must be held during a general election. The next general election scheduled is this coming November 2024. We would anticipate that we'll get direction and the council will call an election for November 2024 to get bond authorization for us to be able to issue bonds to execute our capital improvement programs. And again, Lisette and I will get into some slides and hopefully make it pretty understandable, and we'll absolutely do our best. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisette.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation aligns with council priority 2.15, feeling invited to participate in city decisions. As Tom said, in this presentation, we'll provide information on general obligation bonds, or geo-bonds, the city's past voter authorizations, and the city's property tax stabilization policy. Throughout this presentation, you'll hear us use the terms authorization and capacity. Tom will go over them in great detail in the second half of the presentation. We'll also provide information on pavement quality index, or PQI acceleration, and key dates for the November 2024 election. So first thing, what are general obligation bonds, or geo-bonds? Geo-bonds are a type of debt that cities can issue to fund capital projects. They must be authorized by voters and they are typically repaid over 20 years, using revenues collected from secondary property taxes. They are subject to constitutional limits, and under the provision of the Arizona Constitution, the outstanding general obligation debt for combined water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space, and parks cannot exceed 20% of the city's total net assessed full cash property values. The total outstanding general obligation debt for other municipal purposes cannot also exceed 6% of the total net assessed full cash property values for the city. As you can see in this chart, the city of Tempe holds a bond election every four years. We've received voter authorization to issue geo-bonds for water and sewer improvements, for transportation, municipal infrastructure, public safety, park improvements, or community services, street improvements, and storm drains. The last election we had, as Tom said, was back in 2020. We do have remaining voter authorization from the 2016 election, from the water and sewer improvement category. And we also have remaining voter election from the 2020 bond election in all categories you see on this slide. The city's property tax stabilization policy was adopted by council in fiscal year 2011. The policy ensures that the secondary property tax levy is stable and predictable each year. It also states that the revenues collected from secondary property taxes can only be used for repayment of debt, geo-debt. And also states that the levy can be increased using the Price Consumer Index, or PCI, but it cannot exceed 3.3% in any given year. The policy and also the secondary property tax levy is what, are what we use to, as the basis for the amount of debt the city can issue or our capacity to issue. Also use them to guide the size of the geo-bond funded capital projects. And what we really look at is that we ensure that the revenues collected from secondary property taxes are sufficient to pay off the debt service for the city's existing debt and any future debt that we'll issue. And if the PQI acceleration continues to move forward to a bond election and voters approve it, then the city of, city council would need to consider updating the stabilization policy, because the secondary property tax levy or the revenues needed to support the city's debt service will be, will need to be increased greater than 3.3%, including the debt for the PQI acceleration. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Tom.
Thanks, Lisette. So just one more thing on the stabilization policy, why do we do it? Really why we do it is to give the residents and property owners an idea of where their city of Tempe portion property taxes are going to land. It's predictable for the, for the property owners, it's predictable for council, predictable for staff, for us to be able to develop the CIP. So let's get in a little bit on geo-bond sizing. How do we do it? How do we determine the questions and the dollar amounts that we will put on an authorization election? And before I kind of go through these bullet points, probably the most important factor is, is that last bullet point on there, is the CIP is the basis for us to develop the bond election questions. In other words, if the projects are not in the CIP, we will not size the bond election questions around projects that aren't in the CIP. I didn't say that very well. But basically, projects have to be in the CIP for us to develop the bond election questions. So what we look at is, we looked at, we look at several factors. We look at the stabilization, stabilization policy. How much revenue are we going to get in that will support the bonds that we issue for the capital projects? Also, the available voter authorization. If we don't have authorizations, we cannot issue bonds. It's that simple. And lastly, what I would say is, we also have the constitutional limit. Do our total bonds outstanding, subject to the constitutional limit, exceed that? We have to do that every time we issue bonds. We report that in our annual financial statements, so we have to stay in, within that limitations. And based on those three factors, it really determines the capacity we have to issue bonds. So we will go through and go through the CIP development process, and we basically size the CIP to what we can afford. How much revenue are we going to get in for geo-bonds? How many, how much geo-bonds can we issue because of that revenue? And then these are the amounts, the geo-bonds are the amounts that will support the projects in our CIP. In other words, it's fairly stable and predictable. A quick example, and really the purpose of this slide is to inform the public that we don't ask for bond authorization more than we need. What does that mean? If we have remaining bond authorization, like Ms. Camacho said, we will not go forward and ask for additional amount over and above. So what does that mean? If we have a, for this example, street and improvement projects in the CIP of $260 million, 261.3 is what the slide says, if we have available or remaining authorization, and here it's 128.2, we will only ask the voters for an additional 133.1, or we round it typically to the nearest million, $134 million in voter authorization. Again, we won't ask for more authorization than what we need, utilizing leftover bond authorization than we have.
Councilmember DeVore?
Just real quick, so 120, give me on this one again, remaining authorization, 128.2, but you're going to authorize 133.1. Why not 129?
Mayor, members of the council, it's actually a really good question, and this is a real example, except I messed up on the, on the projects. So this really is actual amount of remaining authorization for our water, wastewater projects. So let me, let me kind of give you an example. As it sat at June 30, and this happens to be 2019, we had $128 million of unused but authorized bonds. In other words, we could go out and issue another 128 million based on the 2016 and prior bond elections, okay? In the CIP back then, we identified $261 million of projects that we needed to execute our five-year CIP. We didn't need to ask the voters for 261 million, because we already had unused authorization of 128. So we just asked the voters for the difference. The difference between those two is the 133 million. So if you take the remaining authorization of 128 that we had from prior elections, we asked the voters for 134 million, which it did pass, those two numbers together would allow us to execute the $260 million of projects that we had in our CIP.
Sounds good. Okay.
I'm sorry?
I said you're good with numbers.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I just put, I just put a wrong heading on this slide, but, but thank you. Now, one of the things that we're going to talk about is PQI acceleration. I know we've been counsel before, back in September, to talk about this, but I wanted to talk about it again, to make sure we all, we understand it. What staff has brought forward to council is a program to accelerate our PQI. In other words, that's the measurement of our pavement quality in the city. The current target of PQI is 70. It's just a number, is 70 by 2036. Our actual PQI, as it sits today, is 60, so we're below the target by 10 points. The program we brought forward is to accelerate our PQI from the current level of 60, past the target of 70, to an estimate of 82. And that would happen in a shortened timeframe. The current timeframe to get to PQI of 70 is by 2036. If we go forward with this program, we've estimated that we'll hit the 82 by 2029, an acceleration of about seven years, an increase past our target by about 12 points. And this is just a little graph of showing, and it's, it's a ratable increase, but showing how we go above the target, that red line of 70, to our estimate of 82 by, by 2029.
Quick, couple additional questions. Councilmember Keating and then Vice Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. This is important, so I just want to, I want to be clear and like clarify that this is getting out to the public here. So currently, our goal is a PQI of 70 by 2036. However, we're talking about hitting 82 by 2029, which is obviously is an improvement, right? But with this plan, should, should it move forward and be approved, of course, we will hit, we'll be over 70 by 2027. So we'll hit our current goal in the next three and a half years, three years essentially, if this moves forward and passes through the voters, correct?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, that's exactly correct. The only thing that I'll say is, I made that, those bars exactly the same. You may have a little bit of this, but yes, overall, you are exactly correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that what we're asking here, that this is, this is a stark improvement from doing, from just going at our normal, our current plan. I'm having trouble today, I don't know why. But this is a vast improvement over the status quo. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, and as Widel Holmes explained earlier, it fits very well within your priorities. I mean, it's, it was ranked the number one in your, in your start tool priorities.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, going back to that, you know, the PQI, I'll never let that, that go. I completely agree. I mean, I think the residents have been so crystal clear with us about how they feel about their streets. And I think that the acceleration, 82, to go to 82 in 2029 is a very reasonable goal. And at some point, we have to put more money into, you know, repairing and replacing our streets. So I am a complete supporter of this, and I appreciate that you put PQI in as part of this bond election and, and improving what is so evident to our, to our residents. So thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mayor, members of the council, a business point to that, and not, I can't advocate one way or another for, for this election to go, but as a business point is, if you get your PQI to an acceptable level, then it comes down to just maintenance of your streets. So over the long run, 20, 30 years, it's actually much cheaper to maintain, and Isaac Shaver explained that a heck of a lot better than I can, but, but from a very high level, it is an investment in the streets and it will get cheaper than what we would estimate if we, if we, you know, remained at the 60 or even between the 60 and the 70.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I completely agree, and that's where we got ourselves in a hole in the first place. We were not repairing our streets and replacing them early enough. And so that's when we got into this, this situation, which probably happened about 10 years ago now. So this is the way that we fix this. This is the best way to fix it, and I'm really, really happy that this is in here again and, but Isaac's right. I mean, there isn't, it wasn't magic that made all of our streets, it was mismanagement, quite frankly, in that the streets were not being repaired at the, at the rate they needed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just a little bit, or one other slide, or two other slides on PQI acceleration. The plan that we presented to council in September is to go out and issue geo-bonds that need to be approved by the voters. It would need to be approved, if council directs, it would need to be approved by voters in this upcoming November 2024 geo-bond election. Ms. Camacho talked about the stabilization policy. The one thing that we presented in September, and I'll bring it up against, again here, is what we brought to you was a proposal to basically stack on PQI over and above the regular CIP. And what that means is, there will be a property tax impact, and I reviewed this in September, of $81 per year for the median household. That's, that's just a calculated amount for the median household. And so what we would have to do then, well, the idea again, is not to impact the current CIP. $134 million, if we fit that in the current CIP, that would really compromise the rest of your CIP, your, your, your police CIP project, your fire CIP, your parks. $134 million is, is, that is a significant impact. So that's why we brought the proposal to stack it on top. If we do that, just to let council know, we would bring back our property tax stabilization policy, which was passed by resolution. We would amend that, bring it back to council for approval, basically.
To that point, Tom, and I've got a, something I'm going to add on a little bit later, but I'm going to wait. I totally agree with the notion of updating the property tax stabilization policy. I mean, I was on council, and I, Councilmember DeVore was too, when we first passed that. And I understand exactly why we did. But the reality is, is everyone, I think, up here has talked about tonight, when we are out talking to residents and they're having conversations with us and talking about wanting the roads and the PQI updated a lot faster than it currently is, I think we talked about 2035, 2036 at the current kind of acceleration model. And the fact of the matter is, at some point, if that is what our residents want, and we're going to ask people to maybe pay $6 or $7 more a month for the average median household to do that, I think that's worth it. And from my perspective, I would be happy to go out there and advocate for such a thing to say, look, you know, you all said that this is what you want, and this is how we get there, but we can't just do it by, as, you know, Vice Mayor Adams talked about, by waving a magic wand, we're going to have to really put money behind this effort if we want to get this done a lot faster. So, you know, as much as I really, I think the property tax stabilization policy is a great one, but I am totally happy to update it to make sure that we can actually meet a very, very pressing need that all of our residents that I talked to have.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Which absolutely, I totally get that because we were both there on that when we were making that policy, but I, I think the explanation and having the conversation is key. I think that we need to have a residence weigh-in, but I think simply is kind of like everything else, even in every city in my department in Phoenix. Supply chain, costs, demand, all these things have escalated up, all these prices have inflated. The, the fact of getting material here is a little bit harder than it has been before in the past. So I think there's a solid explanation that needs to be, and the story needs to be told on why and how, and then maybe that flexion, or maybe we get to that point where we're on a path where actually we can bring it back down again, you know, and try to make those taxes reasonable. But I think that conversation definitely needs to happen, and I think, yeah, it'd be a great story.
Thank you. Thank you. And then lastly, you've seen this slide before, and I'll bring it up again. Again, we don't need direction on this. We've basically thrown up two options here for PQI acceleration. And again, we can certainly have a discussion on affordable housing as well at this point, but, but the, the examples what you see here is we typically go to the voters with five ballot questions, and you can see the ballot questions on this slide. And the decision that this council will have to make, and I would estimate that it's either going to be at the March 25 work-study session, or the April 18 budget review session, that's when we'll look for direction on what do we want our ballot to look like? Do we want five questions and include PQI acceleration in the streets question? Or do we want six questions to specifically break out PQI acceleration? And again, we're not asking for a direction for that tonight. It could be a robust discussion when we come back to council in the spring. And then, and then circling back to the affordable housing that was brought up, again, we kind of do the same thing, and it, and a lot of it depends on the program. If we have a fairly sizable affordable housing, we've got two options. We could slot it in to one of these questions, we could break it out, and it really, the, the sort of the plan based on council direction that we bring back to you, and it's really comes down to what's the dollar amount we're looking at and the time. In other words, if it's a significant dollar amount, and insignificant, I'd say $50 million where it starts to impact other projects, you know, we can certainly come back to council and say, okay, here's staff's recommendation on what projects should give. Or if it's a fairly nominal amount, we can go back to work and see if we can fit it in our, our, our current CIP, which we'll be discussing this, this spring. So I believe, oh, I got, I got one more unless we want to talk affordable housing, and, it's just really the key dates. One thing that's, you know, we usually have key dates on our budget process, and there's a little bit of budget process here, the, the differences are, we anticipate a bond committee will be formed in January for the November election. Again, I talked about the March 25 and April 18 council meetings to discuss the CIP specifically, and we will look for direction on the ballot in, in, I anticipate in one of those two meetings, unless legal or our financial guys tell me different. Call for election would have to be at the April 25 regular council meeting to call for the November election, 180 days before. I anticipate a mailing date of a publicity pamphlet, October 1, and then obviously the November 5 bond authorization election. And I think, yes, that's it, and be certainly happy to answer any questions or, or hear any feedback that you have.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Lisette. So a couple of things on my end, too. First of all, as we all talked about, very much agree with the PQI, no argument with that whatsoever. I think that's a critically important need, and arguably, the number one thing that the majority of our residents talk about is we're out in the community, so I'm fine with that. The other two items were, you know, Tom, you talked about affordable housing, and I know I mentioned it during the prior presentation on 3A. That one, I think, is critically important to talk about, and I know you're not asking for direction because we'd have to go back and actually do an analysis on how much money we could potentially do without impacting current CIP projects. But the big reason is because that's one of the other things that I hear our community talk about very loudly, is how do we find ways to ensure that our, our first responders and our teachers and our service employees can continue to live in the city? They're all getting rapidly priced out of this community. And my perspective on that is, there are a lot of times where we get offers every now and then from people to purchase properties in the city of Tempe, or we see signs up and we inquire, but we sometimes miss those opportunities unfortunately because we don't have money sitting aside in a separate pot that we can just draw down from to say, we're going to use this money right now to make that acquisition and create additional affordable housing. The residents along Apache Boulevard, as an example, right at Apache and Dorsey, are so excited about the ability to get those 400 mixed income units and bring a grocery option back to Apache Boulevard, because that, at that time, we had the 10.6, 10.7 million set aside to go out and just simply purchase it. So from my perspective, I would like to talk about the affordable housing bond because I'd like to have that separate pot of money so we don't miss upcoming opportunities, especially in a landlocked community where land is so precious and it's so hard to get a good piece of property to do some kind of guaranteed affordable housing on. And my understanding, too, is that if we actually have, not only if we have ownership of the property, does that mean it's more likely we're going to get true affordable housing, but that the city, you know, the fact that we have it means that we can kind of put more strings attached and ensure that it doesn't, that there's no kind of funny business going on. So I mean, I would really like to explore that and look at a dollar amount. The second one is historic preservation, which I'm also very interested in, and the reason why that one's important to me, too, is a lot of residents talk about the continued development in the downtown and around the city, and we have very few sort of historic sites really left in this community. And so what I really always like to tell residents is we can't stop progress, we have to add additional housing, we have to keep moving forward as a community, but it doesn't mean that we can't find ways to preserve some of those existing sites that are really critically important to telling the history of Tempe, who we are, and how we got to this point in the first place. So I don't see that number as being especially big when it comes to a specific bond question, but I would like to talk about historic preservation because I do think it is really critically important to a segment of our community, but I think it's important to show people you can preserve the elements of the past while also still moving forward and setting the city up for its most prosperous future. So that's my perspective, you know, the PQI 100% in, but I'd also like to explore bond questions for affordable housing and historic preservation.
Councilmember Garland, Vice Mayor Adams, and Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you adding in the affordable housing and, you know, the historic preservation also. I think that's, those are things that, you know, we've talked about before, I think is really, they're really important, and I think one really good example of that is when the property on Apache became available and we had to try to find the funding to try to purchase that property so that we could make a difference in the affordable housing that we have here in the community. So I think that would be a really, really good, healthy one for us to have, and also the same thing with the historic preservation. If there's something that becomes available that we want to try to preserve and we don't have the money to do, where, where are we going to find it? And we need to make sure that we talk about how important historic preservation is in our, in a community. This is just another way of us putting our money where our mouth is and trying to make sure that we have money in reserve to be able to do something if we had the opportunity. So I, I agree with the mayor that I, I would like to see if we could add those, too, if it's possible.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to say that I agree with the mayor on the historic preservation and affordable housing, so I think we need to really look at those and, and add those where we can, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I like what you're saying, however, just so I get clarity on the, is questions added to the bond? So if we're electing a bond, we're have these seven items on the bond, each of those items are going to get allocated money from the bond, and that's what the voters are voting on. So if, let me just throw this out, if we have that many questions, if there's two questions that voters are like, absolutely not, the bond could actually go down. I mean, it could actually not approve, be approved.
That, that's a very interesting ques, and I'm so glad you brought that up, because what I am curious about, too, is would those things be sort of fall under the sort of single-subject rule of they all have to be individual questions, or are they part of sort of bigger questions? Because I get your point, as the ballot gets longer and longer, do, do you risk people maybe not getting to the end of the ballot and therefore voting no, or not voting on some of the later questions? Or do you risk, if you lump it all together, do you risk people saying there's a lack of transparency, or voting no on something, and then all of it going down because of one thing that people don't like? So no, I, that's a great question.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I'll give my canned answer, it depends. It depends on what the program looks like, it depends on the size of the program. A $135 million PQI program, I would argue, is very significant, and so that would be one, if council chooses, you know, it would fit very nicely into a separate question. A, it depends what the affordable housing program would look like. As you know, we, we currently have a pretty robust affordable housing through the affiliate program going now, so is it just something to supplement that? And if it's, let's just say it's a $10 million program, I would probably recommend that you include that in your, your, which one?
Municipal government.
Municipal government, yeah, bond question. And, and we would, we would work with our, our bond lawyers to say, okay, here's what the initial, the, the general governmental bond question would read, it would include affordable housing, and, and it wouldn't increase at that amount. So again, it's what the program looks like, and really, the, the bigger question is how big the program is, and, and we'd have to work with the city manager to come back with council to say, here's what we recommend relative to where we're at, relative to our stabilization policy, here's what we think it would do, here's what the program would look like, and here's what it would impact.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, I think, and that's, and that's what I'm trying to get to, because I, I think that if we don't have the details of what the program looks like, how do you sell that program, you know? So it's almost like with affordable housing, we get affiliate money coming in, and it's almost like, maybe there's a percentage of that money that's in for the year, or has the average over the five years, it can only be X amount of money that the city can put in. Something that has defined parameters, I guess, that makes sure that, you know, we're doing our, our best job being, you know, as accountable as we can with our money and, for taxpayers, but also knowing that we do have these other programs that are happening the core of the city stuff, the stuff that we have to provide, that we're making sure that our buildings, our, our police departments, our cars, our vehicles, everything is, is still the priority, you know, of the services we do have to buy, or have, you know, to be a functional city. So I'm just like, that's, that's where I want the conversation to probably happen. I love what we're talking about because they are hot issues that come up. Historical, yeah, there's a hot issue, but is that historical kind of only in a defined area where the other areas of Tempe are like, huh, not really bothered by that, and I'm not going to vote for that either, and that kills the whole ballot? So that's where I don't, I want to, place caution on, I guess.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I really appreciate that comment. Whatever we have at our CIP that is bond-funded has to be bond-eligible. In other words, we have to own the asset. It has to serve a public purpose. If it doesn't serve a public, or, or if there's a, we have to determine whether or not we have to issue taxable bonds for something that's taxable, so it becomes very regulated very quick. So we would have to go back and, and develop a program, again, that fits within, you know, the, the parameters of what we can issue bonds for. I appreciate that question.
That's one of the other things I actually love about the notion of the historic preservation and affordable housing bonds, is about us owning the asset, is about the ability for us not to have to always sell land. There are certain times when I think selling land is completely appropriate, but I tend to be the kind of person who wants to keep land and let's say do lengthier, you know, a 60 or a 75-year, very favorable ground lease to an affordable housing developer, but that we're still maintaining control of the asset and not selling off all the pieces of land that we still have remaining in Tempe. I'm not saying that I would never do it, but my, to my, but my typical bent is towards seeing whatever we could keep, so that would completely fit in with my own general philosophy of we would continue to own these assets, which I, I love.
Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask the same question that Councilmember Navarro asked about adding the, putting it all together, the bonds, because concerned about that because I've seen that happen before, and it's failed in other cities, so thanks on that. And I do agree with you, Mayor, that those two, those two questions I would love to see on there about preservation and also on affordable housing. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Additional comments, questions? All right, Tom, Lisette, another direction on your end, or?
So Mayor, members of council, I, I, here's the direction I got charged for with PQI acceleration program in the CIP. Bring back a program that is reasonable based on what we can afford, what fits in our strategies for historic properties and affordable housing.
Sounds good to me. Everybody else good?
Good.
Okay, great, perfect. Nice summation. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, next item on the, on the agenda is the call to the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening, so I will close this item and move on to item 5B, council committees in progress, updates as needed. Are there any updates from council 5B1, 5B2? So 5B2, Vice Mayor?
Yes, 5B2.
Yes.
We have no meeting in December. We're taking the month off and letting everybody enjoy their holidays, and we will reconvene with a lot of enthusiasm in January. So, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Any additional updates, 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3 from council members?
Mayor, we don't have a, Randy, Councilmember Keating and I will not have a meeting in December either, we'll be rebeing in January also.
Okay, that sounds good. Wonderful. All right, that brings us then to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Do any council members have any future agenda items? Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'd like to request, just talking to a few people in North Tempe, could we get just another presentation, or just the character area presentation of what the plan is, or what the city's guidelines of what North Tempe is, is projected to look like, or what moves we're trying to make to enhance that area? I know we talked about the county island and, and where that is going, but I think just a, a presentation for our folks up there, Scottsdale Road. What's interesting is Scottsdale is really pushing against our border with new development, and I think it's intriguing to see what they're doing also, and the type of development they're making, and then if that development does help us blend things in. We also have the issues with the hotels and, and doing sheltering in, in those areas, too. Is that working? Is, how do we accommodate both those things together? Those things, and just the identities of those strip malls and things like that, parks and whatnot. But I think just an overall presentation of, of just what our, our plan guidelines potentially are looking like for that area, and then the possibilities of what Scottsdale's doing and how that development might help or not help that area.
Sounds good. I think Vice Mayor Adams has a comment to the same point.
Yes, Joel, that was what I wanted to have happen, too, and I forgot. So I'm glad you remembered.
Wow.
And two for two, so, yes, so thank you, yeah, that would be, I think it'd be really helpful to see what's, what's going on and, and kind of what our progress is. So, I agree. Thank you.
Sounds good, all good. Madam City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Navarro, and Vice Mayor Adams. We've been working on a few things, so we'd be more than happy to share with you.
Perfect, sounds good. Any, oh, Councilmember Hodge?
I do, I, I think I might have said this the last time, but I'm not sure, but I do want, and I would love an update on our, how well we're doing with our, with our unsheltered homeless community, and, you know, just a, an update from the Hope Team and what's going on, what we can help, what we can do, how that's going to look with our park rangers. I think I just want to overall look at the unsheltered.
Sounds good, Councilmember Hodge. Madam City Manager was looking at me saying that that sounds good to her, she was nodding her head to the approval, so.
We have that agendized for January, I believe.
Okay, so that's on the agenda for January, Councilmember Hodge?
Thank you.
You got it. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, just a follow-up. I think, I thought at one time Randy had asked about the Urban Core Master Plan and what was inside there that we could be using or looking at to move our city forward, taken pieces of that plan, and I, I was looking on the list here, and I didn't see it at all, and I couldn't remember, Randy, what your specific question was on that.
Councilmember Keating?
Yes, particularly it was about what we called the Development Bonus Program.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can talk about the merits of that, but I would like to bring that back for further discussion as far, you know, this body as far as moving forward with some sort of program that mirrors that in the future.
So to that point, just to make sure I'm totally clear, are we going to talk about the, just the density bonus program? Is that the only portion, or the entire sort of Urban Core Master Plan?
My, my focus was the density bonus program, Mayor, but if we want to have a larger discussion about the whole program, I'm fine with that as well.
I'm fine with just density, Councilmember Garland, I'm okay with you?
I'm fine with density bonus.
Okay, so, Madam City Manager, is that okay?
Just for clarity, we had discussed that as a joint meeting, items for the DRC joint meeting with the mayor and council, if I recall correctly, but we can bring it to this floor, whatever the mayor, council would like.
Sounds good, okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you so much. All right, any other future agenda items council members would like added? All right, hearing none, oh, yes, Councilmember Keating?
I would like to sing happy birthday to the mayor.
That's not a future agenda. Actually, it is, technically.
We can get, we, we can get it agendized for, for February, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating, appreciate that. Thank you. Next, I'm going to close it right there.